It's Tuesday, April 1st. This is our new time slot. We've now moved from Wednesdays to Tuesdays. We've moved from 4:30 to 4:15. I'm sorry if anybody is missing us because they're planning on going tomorrow. But we do have a quorum today, which is what counts for us to get going. I wondered if there's anybody with any public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
Aye, approve the minutes.
Okay.
As seconded.
And second from Cheryl. Great. Does anybody have any comments or edits on the minutes? Or changes that weren't made? That they would like to see made? Okay, seeing none, those all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Are you with us?
So there were changes?
Are you still reading them? Are you with us?
I am.
All you have to do is say aye.
I couldn't, oh yes, aye. I couldn't read them online.
Four zero approved, thank you. Going through the trustee chair report, there's two items I wanted to bring up. One of them is, I talked to the assistant town clerk today, and there's two people who filed for library trustee slots for the upcoming election. And they include Bill Powers, who's an author who's lived in town for many years. And the second person is Tracy Murphy, whose family owns Landhoe and she's been very involved here.
That's fun to have two of them.
Over the years, yeah.
Tracy Murphy. Do we know how to spell Tracy's?
To have two, that's good.
It's a regular Y, no E, yeah. So they both returned their papers. They've got the right number of signatures, so they're all set. And I haven't, I'm pretty sure the deadline is now passed.
Hmm.
For following papers, yeah. So that's, that's good news. Bill is gonna work to have a tour with Tavi so he can get more familiar with library stuff. And Tracy said that she would try and do the same thing. I'll try and make it so that it's maybe the same date for...
I'm happy to do separate ones too. You know, whatever works for them.
Great.
How many positions are open?
There's two.
Two positions are open, the two candidates?
Yep, so we won't have to have a forum. Which is good, because we had to do that last time around. That's one update. The second update is on the video. We've had a lot of activity on the video over the course of the last couple of weeks. We've, since it's been up on YouTube, it's now a little bit over 220 views so far. So that's, you know, that's good, considering that it's been out for only a short period of time. If you get a chance to give it to anybody else you want, make sure that they view it and encourage them to hit the like button, which is the thumbs up button. So that if we get more thumbs up on it, it definitely helps us overturn the viewership. The article that Cape Cod Chronicle did is on the website, but it hasn't appeared in the print edition. And I don't have a confirmation yet whether it's going to be in this week's print edition. So they do this thing sometimes where they write articles late past their deadline and they put them up online and they stay online. And I think it might be the case for the video, I just don't know. What's happening too is that they're starting to get jammed up with pre-town meeting things. And so they've got their, a whole series of articles that they've already scheduled to write. So I'm glad at least that they did it, that it was favorable piece. It had great quotes from Tavi, some from Charlie as well, which I really thought was helpful. Is, anybody have not seen that piece yet that I'm talking about that ran in the Chronicle?
It hasn't been in the Chronicle, you said, right?
No, it's on their website now.
Yeah, I don't go look at the Chronicle's website. I read the Chronicle.
Okay.
I would be very upset if it's not in the Chronicle, it should be.
Well, I'll talk to Ryan again.
Yeah.
I'll tell him you said that.
I'm sure if he would care.
Yeah, right.
No, I mean, I think it's, I think that the, it would be good if they do both. And we have a good relationship with him, so I'm hoping that that happens. The second piece about the video is that Lower Cape TV now has it and they're gonna put it up on their site so that people can see it through there as well. I don't know whether they're gonna use the YouTube link or whether they're gonna take the larger video so we wouldn't necessarily have a counting mechanism, but it's something that we'll figure out in the next week or so. Does anybody have any questions about the trustee stuff or the video or anything else about?
Boon.
Huh? Hold on. Okay. I'm gonna turn it over to Tavi so he can talk a little bit about the items that are in the back of your package.
Okay.
As you all know, the federal government has been working towards making a series of cuts on federal funding that could seriously impact the operation of the state library system. Tavi's gonna talk a little bit about it. We don't have anything on our agenda in terms of a motion or an action today as a body. We're limited to acting on stuff like this. Working as an individual and sending in your own letter is really the best thing to do if you wanna take a position on this. But I do think that this is something that really merits our attention and especially since as many as 13 positions at the state level could be partially or fully eliminated if the cuts went through.
So this is, this is kind of a summary. There have been a lot of emails on it. And then there was an ALA discussion on it. And so this is kind of just a summary of what it is. So the Institute of Museum and Library Services, which I'll call IMLS, it's important to note it's the only federal agency devoted to supporting public libraries. It's an independent federal agency. And it administers federal grants to states. And on the 14th, a federal executive order, and I did read the order, 14238, was issued calling for drastic funding reduction to IMLS. Again, noting that this is the sole federal agency that provides any support to public libraries. An acting director was appointed on March 20th, Keith Sonderling. Now, he is, he has no background or experience in either museums or libraries. I looked it up. He was a labor, an employment lawyer and formerly deputy secretary of the US Department of Labor.
Can I, why was an acting director, did they, did they get rid of the other director?
The other director, yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
All right.
And so when, when all of these emails were coming out, so as of the 27th of March, no funding cuts had been done. And all of the staff were still there and working. However, as of yesterday, on Monday, March 31st, nearly all of the staff, and I tried to do some research as to how many that is, and I got a couple of emails that I read that were, so we're talking probably about 75 people. Nearly all the staff, 75 supposedly at IMLS, were placed on administrative leave. And as a result, all the processing of grants has been suspended. So technically, it was called, the order called for a budget reduction. So people from ALA suspect that that means a lot of the lines of this IMLS are gonna be zeroed out, which is, means a lot of the funding. ALA emphasizes the defunding effect on the E-Rate program. And that basically is a program that helps libraries, especially in disadvantaged communities with telecommunications. Networks apply for E-Rate so they have their, their cost in technology reduced. They're very, they're very much focused on that aspect of it. But it's interesting to note all of the other services that IMLS does. So, and then at the end, I'm just gonna mention about the actual percentage funding for IMLS is as far as all of the federal funding completed. So, as Jamie mentioned, so 13 of the 23 Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioner positions are partially federally funded. All of our databases, they could be affected as well. The Commonwealth Catalog, which is like the interlibrary loan database. The statewide ebook program. Training for librarians also. Library, library schools all depend a lot on IMLS. The LSTA grant programs also depend on it. And just as a reminder, so the Snow Studio, the grant that Kaeni wrote for the Snow Studio, that was an LSTA grant. So.
Can you talk a little bit about why CLAMs might be affected?
It's...
Well, for example, E-Rate, they apply for E-Rate, which helps with the technology.
Okay.
So that, I mean, that's, that's direct. I mean, there are probably others. The MBLC is, would be more directly affected by all of those reasons listed here.
But are there any funds that go to CLAMs?
Yes, the E-Rate.
The E-Rate.
And the databases and the ebooks.
And if they don't get that, does it jeopardize their ability to run CLAMs?
It jeopardizes the ability to have those things. In other words, the statewide databases, the E-Rate and ebooks, yes. But not, I mean, not running CLAMs, but providing these, these things. So the other thing to notice, as I mentioned, so IMLS supports everyone in the, in, in the country. And yet, it represents 0.003% of the federal budget. So, you know, we're not, we're not talking about it being such a large percentage of it. I mean, that's a very small percentage. And just the other things that IMLS does too, which is, is very important. So they expand technology, they improve disaster preparedness. And that again is a function, MBLC has disaster preparedness workshops. STEM programs, workforce development, homework and research resources, Braille and talking books, summer reading programs, making the libraries more accessible to those with physical and invisible, visible and invisible disabilities. So, and it also, it has statutory obligation to state libraries, including National Leadership Grant Fund. So, I mean, these are all things that potentially will be affected. And just, you know, you mentioned about E-Rate and stuff like, you know, about technology. How does, how does this affect libraries? So all the things that are under this would be like the internal connections, cabling, Wi-Fi equipment, mobile wireless internet service. So, and again, as Jamie mentioned, one of the things that people are asked to do is to contact your congressional representative, write letters in support of the IMLS to not do this reduction because it would really, as you can see from some of the programs listed, it does really have an impact on libraries. Especially with National Library Week coming up, April 6th through 12th. I actually summarized all of that and it's going to appear in the Wow library newsletter just to try to get it out more to people.
Great, and I think that's a really important topic.
CLAMs is actually funded by the membership dues that the individual libraries pay. But the telecommunications costs for CLAMs, and they have to have a whole telecommunications network because it's a separate, it's a separate wiring to each library from any other telecommunications. It's a dedicated CLAMs telecommunications network. And that's paid for by the E-Rate. So that although they don't fund the CLAM staff, the loss of it would impact the CLAM's ability to operate, as well as some of the services.
Do you have an idea of how much that has to cost CLAMs?
I don't have, I'd have to look that up, I don't have it.
Yeah. What's the latest thing that the MBLC has said about this loss of funding? Has it, have the board given any more updates?
No, in fact, I checked right before I came, so when I got all this. So the only, the newest development is, you know, as, as of last week, the person had mentioned that staff was still working. So that was a, it was kind of a positive sign. But as of Monday, they've all, almost all was the way it was phrased, have been placed on administrative leave. And so that means they can't work while they're on administrative. So none of the functions that IMLS is doing are being done.
And no checks are being...
This is the national step.
Yes, yes. And so that will affect, so for example, processing grants. I mean, nobody's there doing that.
Right now is when they usually start to ramp up the children's summer reading program, for instance, which is a statewide, they offer it to all the public libraries in the state. But the statewide program is developed by the MBLC and then distributed to the libraries with posters and reading logs and all that kind of thing. And if that money, if the checks aren't going out of the IMLS, I'm not sure they'll be able to do that. So there might not be able to be a summer reading program, for instance, unless each library develops their own.
Oh, right. The only, I mean, the only positive thing to say out of this, not, not the reduction in funding, but that the state aid that libraries receive is a truly state thing. So that's not something we have to worry about. And state aid is, is very important to libraries.
Massachusetts does more than most states themselves. Many states, their whole state program is funded for IMLS. But that's why we have our, we have a lot of grants that are set. You know, the state aid grant that we get every year and the construction money is state funded, not federal.
Right. Is there anything that the ALA talked about, whether there was any legal challenges yet? On the cuts? Whether there are any lawsuits filed? I hadn't seen anything.
No, no, not, but I mean, they're, they're obviously looking at different opportunities to try to, you know, so that, so that they can, basically, basically what they're asking everyone to do is to say what a detrimental effect that the reduction would have on, on all of the libraries, not just the IMLS, because it, it all filters down.
Sure. Thanks, Tavi. Any other questions or comments? I think having this placed in the Wow library is a really important thing for us to do. I also think that it's important for library staff to be prepared, as Tavi is, so that if there's patron questions at the checkout counter, that people know what's going on rather than saying, well, I don't really know what's going on. So if you can make sure that the staff know the general understanding of what's happening. They don't have to have all the latest numbers. But I think this is really a moving, you know, it's something that's changing by the day. I mean, it seems like Monday was a really, really huge day for cuts that we saw to other agencies that they were waiting on. And I think that I'm very interested to see what the response is from organizations like the ALA and, and other groups of senators and representatives and see what they're trying to do. Because when you start going after libraries and summer reading programs and budgets for databases, it's just, you know, it's, it's no longer a, a small correction on shrinking the size of government. It really starts getting home. Yeah. You know, and I know that, that Snow Library will not be immune to this. It will definitely trickle down to us.
Well, it's interesting. It actually could come back to the fact that if there's problems with some of the CLAMs and the databases and the ebooks, that more people will come in and start using the library again and actually getting books again. I mean, I'm not saying that, that's, that's just trying to look at a silver lining in the midst of all this.
One positive point.
Yeah, something positive. But, you know, we get to rely upon all these internet everything. That's all I can hold my books now. I hardly ever come in the library, it was just bad.
This is what my friend said. She said she never comes to the library. It's my neighbor, she just, I'm trying to sort of say, you know, you ought to try it. Go on in.
Yeah, 92,000 people going in and out last year, couldn't be wrong. I mean, it's, it's definitely a place for a lot of people.
Exactly, that's fantastic.
Tavi, could you also reach out to the assistant town manager and the town manager and give them an update? And CC me in it, just saying that, you know, this is what's happened. You know, give them the dates. Give them a very brief summary of what you think might be the short-term impacts. And ask them if, you know, they're interested in having a conversation about, you know, what the town might potentially discuss or, or do. I just think it's really important to keep them in the loop.
Yeah. Did I, Jamie, excuse me, did I miss something in that first two minutes? Have you already found that there's some funding that is being challenged at Snow Library? What has been impacted?
There's, there's no direct cuts from the federal cuts that we understand at this point. But there's multiple areas where there could be cuts.
So this is still a could be? This is not a state, a situation where Snow Library has yet been impacted?
Right.
It's hitting, it will hit many of the CLAM services. That's why I nodded yes. Because it hits the E-Rate, which is probably fund their telecommunications, the cabling system that goes into the library to operate CLAMs.
Through open...
Is partially paid for through federal funding. And the summer reading program, the ebooks, the databases, right? That's, yeah. So, you know, all of those things.
We just don't have a measurement of that yet.
It just happened Monday.
Yeah, we do, we don't have a measurement yet. But the thing, the two things that, that we would see right away is if there's a cut to, for example, the databases that, that patrons use or the state ebooks or the Commonwealth Catalog, which is, is very popular and people use for interlibrary loans.
But does that get federal funding or, funding or state funding?
Federal.
Federal.
And there's 13 state employees whose positions are threatened right now. And so there's 26 employees in the MBLC. And there hasn't been a decision made yet in terms of whether those positions are gonna be cut. But that's a significant number of positions for, for the state to try and backfill.
That's about half their staff.
Yeah. We were lucky. I mean, we did get a significant increase in, in funding. Not a huge increase, but there was an increase in this last budget cycle. So the, you know, the governor is supportive of the library system, but 13 positions parting full-time is, that's significant.
So what I think I'll do, Jamie, is that this week, the end of this week, I have to do a bi-weekly update to the select board. And I send it to Mark and Kim. So I'll just include that right up in there when I do it. So that way, so that way they'll know as well.
Okay. Does anybody have any more comments or questions? Okay, turning to Sue for the financial report.
As we look at the finances, we still look like we're very much on track to follow our budget in, in the year, in the black. We're almost three quarters of the way through the year now and it's fine. I mean, everything's about 70%, 71% of expenditures of the budget. So the only thing is some of the friends is, we're, there's not too much left from the friends when you look at what there is left out of what there was when like the March expenditures were $6,700. So if, if we want that every time, there's not going to be that amount of funds for the end of the year. But a lot of the things are things we've already paid for. Although, one of them is the summer reading program. It says in here that, so that...
So like supplies for it, in other words?
Supplies.
Yeah, so.
So I think that's the area we have to be careful on if we don't wanna run over. But otherwise, everything looks good. Using some of the funds, the trust funds. We've got interest for February, that was $2,500 almost. So everything looks good.
Great, thank you. Any questions on the monthly report? Okay, turning it back over to Tavi to talk about your report. Is there anything you wanna highlight?
Just, just some things to add or just some explanations of some things. So Kim O'Clery in her youth services report mentioned about participating in the community-wide read. And I also went to that and participated in that. I do it every year along with the youth services librarian. And I had a great time as well. Kim had the first grade class, I had the fourth grade class. And I read a book entitled, to them, "The Bad Seed Goes to the Library." Yeah, it's a very good book by Jurey John. I never look at this first because I want to enjoy it along when I'm reading it with them. And they were all, they're all familiar with Snow Library. They all have library cards. And they had a lot of questions. In fact, I think I was probably one of the last ones to leave. And they are all questions about the library, how it works, how many items we have and so forth. And it truly is my, the most favorite, most favorite presentation I do. I really, they're always the, they're such great students at the Orleans Elementary School. And they, they're always so excited about the library and about learning. And they always have great comments to make. So I really enjoy, it's a wonderful experience, so I really enjoy that.
Yeah, the fourth grade class is a good class.
Yes. Yeah. I mean, I've had, I've had a few of them and they all, I mean, they're all really, they're all really great. I'm always amazed how much they know and, and how much they, they, questions they ask about the story and how much they raise this, questions about the library and how libraries work. So it's really, I mean, it's, it's, it's exciting to be asked those questions because they're really interested, so I really enjoy it. And then the only other thing is I just wanna update you on the status for the removal of the computers from the children's area. So the reason it hasn't happened yet is because we want to get the Chromebook, at least a Chromebook to start with, and get it ready. And that, because of a lot of emails I've read, there are ways to set it up. And so we have to do that first. I mean, Kim wants that first, so that way, if students are interested in it, they can sign up. So we have to get all of that documentation and everything done. And of course, lock it down so that way, you know, when they're using it, it doesn't, you know, just go to any other sites. Because this, this Chromebook can be brought anywhere in the library. So it's not like it's going to be stationary in one area.
Right. Now, do you have funding? Do you have enough funding to pay for this?
Yes.
Okay, great. Do you anticipate how long it might be until?
Well, getting the Chromebook is not difficult at all. It's, I'm probably gonna have to work with the IT department on getting it available to use because you're supposed to, when a student checks it out and it comes back, it's supposed to be, you know, electronically wiped clean. So if they do anything on there, you know, it just goes back to its original status. See, we have that on our regular desktop computers. We, we have software on there called DeepFree so that all you do is just reboot it. And anything that anybody does, it just goes back to the way it was. So a product like that has to either be on the Chromebook or we have to find a way to do that.
And that's the first time we've had a laptop accessible that people can check out?
Yes.
So it can't leave the building?
Right.
Okay.
Because that, I mean, that would, that would be another issue as well if it could because there are all sorts of issues with, you know, Chromebooks and so forth leaving and, you know, not coming back and so forth. And it ends up being...
For somebody to check out this Chromebook, are they gonna have to have a parent sign something?
Yes, so, yes. And it's not going to be electronically checked out. It's just gonna be signed out. They have to use it in the building and they do have to get parental permission.
Each time? Or just on file?
Just on file.
Okay, great.
Sounds like a new, one of the things Mark was writing.
Policy?
Policy, about the Chromebook.
Practically, I mean, it's a big, it's a big change.
It is a big change. But you know, the other thing is policies too. And I'll have to talk to Mark about it as well. So all the policies that were approved, so already, I mean, there are little changes that need to be made and the like. So all the policies that were approved, so already, I mean, there are little changes that need to be made and the like. You know, for example, the wireless hotspot policy. We probably had a conversation, I think, at one of these meetings that we had no age stipulation in there. And so that's, that's an issue. And I was looking up other libraries' policies and I noticed that all of them say there you have to be eighteen years old or older in order to check it out. And the reason I found out is that this is an MBLC policy. So, and, and we did not have that in our policy. So that's, that's another thing that has to be.
It's amazing because Mark really researched all these.
I don't think Brewster had it in their policy because I, I bought them when I was there.
Yeah, these are just all these things, you know, they, they don't, it's, it's hard to write a policy. And then when you go to implement it, you find all these questions come up. And so you're always, in fact, I was at a meeting of CLAMs libraries and the librarians were talking about how you used to be able to write a policy and your policy'd be good for, you know, a few years or something. And now it seems like this policy review is just a constant thing because you're always trying to put things in. You know, the same thing like collection development policies, you know, because of all the censorship and challenges. And so libraries are trying to tighten up their policies. And so, you know, they revise the policy, it gets approved. And then a month or two later, they're trying to make more revisions.
So it's almost like a three-month thing.
Oh, it's almost, it's, it seems to be, with certain, with certain types of policies.
But did ours ever really get all approved by, by?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know if I even knew that.
And so, well, because Mark, Mark was going to present it at, at the next meeting, which was this one. So I guess we're probably going to have that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
Do you think there'll be an age limit on the Chromebook? An age entry point?
Well, you know, it's interesting. I, you mentioned that, you know, we, we haven't, we haven't talked about that.
I'm wondering.
That might be something I'd, I'd want to look. I mean, already I, I'm, I have a meeting with Kim with all these questions that are coming up like, you know, how are we going to draft the form? How are we going to do this? How are we going to do that? And so that's another thing too, just the, the age limit on that. So I will add that in.
So this would be for the kids to do homework on?
No, they can just, they can do it. They can play games on it.
You can play games on, on the Chromebook?
Yeah.
Okay. Would we buy certain games and load them on there for them?
No, I mean, we don't, we don't do that on our desktop computers either.
No, those, those have been loaded by others in the past, from what I understand. And, and Kim is, the conversation I had with Kim last week, she said that she hasn't decided yet whether to seek the support from the friends to buy a specific gaming cart that kids could use occasionally that would be locked up. I think she wants to see how the Chromebook goes, whether it's checked out by people, whether it isn't, what the response is before taking it to a next step in terms of purchasing anything.
Doesn't seem like one would be enough, one Chromebook.
Well, I think it's a starting point. And I think that.
How much, how many computers do we have now that we're going to try to replace?
There's three now that have games on them out of the four. And.
There's four.
A total of four that would go away. And all of the middle school students already have Chromebooks that they have via the regional school district. It's just a question as to what they can do with those Chromebooks versus this Chromebook. So we're still figuring out everything. Thank you, Tavi, for the detailed update.
And I will have updates as long as we need to.
Yep. That's a big change. Okay, moving on to the next topic, the report from the Friends of Snow Library Representative, Joni Smith.
Right.
Gotcha.
Financially, we're quite solid. This is from July of twenty-twenty-four to February of twenty-twenty-five. Our gross year-to-date profit is almost a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Year-to-date contributions were almost forty-two thousand. Total operating expenses were about twenty-nine thousand. And year-to-date income is almost sixty thousand. And Linda said everything is quite solid. On our technology report, Jerry Grenier, who is really very good and we're so happy, he's joined our committee, has loaded all of our legacy membership data into the Little Green Light, which is the new computer system. And he is really very impressed with it, said that it's very flexible. And he's very happy that it was chosen. Our membership chair is adding in all the people and donations from twenty-twenty-five, so they're pretty current. The next thing they need to do is create templates for specific reports they want to pull information on and to convert the current, our current website to conform to Little Green Light. And then they will start figuring out how to integrate the lifetime learning data. Lifetime learning also is doing well. We've had a hundred, I'm sorry, a thousand and thirty, three-hundred-and-fifty registrations from two-hundred and, I'm sorry, four-hundred-and-twenty registrants. There have been two new, ten new ads that have been created and are showing at the Chatham Orthium Theater. There's also some Zoom-only courses that are being made available in the Crane Room for people who are without the technology to Zoom at home. Other news is there will be our major donor reception that will be held at Cho on June fifth from five to seven P.M. And the Donald Baker Poetry Celebration, which we've had quite a few years with the Nauset Regional Middle School, eighth graders, will be held on June tenth in the Crane Room. And Jerry, who is a poet himself, is going to print and make a booklet of the poems that the children write. And they'll have that as a present.
So June fifth, five to seven P.M., annual meeting at Cho. Can mark your calendars, everyone. Thank you so much, Joni. Especially the financials are very strong.
They are.
It's encouraging. I haven't been to the Chatham Orthium lately, but I'm sure those ads are really helping bring in more people to LTL. That's great. We're at the end of the agenda. Does anybody have anything else that they'd like to comment on or bring up before we adjourn? I'll entertain a motion.
Can you move to adjourn?
In a second?
Our second.
All in favor?
Yes.
All righty.
Did you second?